Good evening. It is five o'clock on Tuesday, December thirteenth. We have a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. We will be going into executive session on the following items. Item two A, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding potential real estate, land use development, and economic development alternatives for the Pine Forest Unit Six subdivision. Item two B, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072 Real Property, and 551.087 Economic Development to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding public-private partnerships for possible multipurpose lodging projects and the City of Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Center. Item two C, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding potential real estate acquisition of Vista Puente Drive right-of-way's and related real estate matters. It is five oh one and we are in executive session. Thank you. It is six oh six and we are out of executive session. We are moving to item number three. Take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. I move the re-accept resolution R. 2022-122 and R. 2022-123.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers and a second from Councilmember Plunkett. We will be, you guys are voting on Resolution 2022-122 and 2022-123. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. I don't believe there is any further action as a result of executive session. It is six oh seven and we will be in recess until our posted time of six thirty for our regular meeting. It's six oh seven and we are in recess. Good evening. It is six thirty and we have a full dais. I'm calling the regulars meeting to order. And it looks like our Red Rock Elementary kids are not with us, but we're grownups and we can do this. So if everyone will please rise, we are going to say the pledge to both flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas pride, I pledge allegiance to the Texas home state and under God, one and indivisible.
If you will please remain standing. We have our Police Chaplain, Robert Oliver, with us this evening, and he will give the invocation. Chaplain Oliver?
Heavenly Father, we commend this meeting to you. We ask for your justice, your wisdom, your discernment to be upon this meeting. Open our eyes as well as our hearts. Give wisdom and blessing on all these proceedings. May be done for the furtherance of your kingdom and the blessing of this community. Thank you for all those who are striving and working to better the lives of the citizens of Bastrop. We commend this time to you in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. You guys may be seated. The next item is the mayor's report, item seven A. I have a couple of things to do first. The first is that Mayor Pro Tem Rogers' birthday is December twenty-eighth, and we won't be meeting before her birthday. So happy birthday, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Have a good one. Have a good one. And we also have a council member who was, whose birthday everyone will celebrate, and that is, Councilmember Crouch's birthday is on December twenty-fifth. And he, because he is a special Christmas birthday guy, he gets his favorite cherry, cherry sours from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. She did not bring some for all of us. So happy birthday, Councilmember Crouch. And thank you, Madam Secretary, for helping keep us straight and taking care of that. It's very, very, very much appreciated. It was quite the weekend in Bastrop, and I'm told that the parade winners have been called and contacted. They are going to be with us. Our next meeting will be, I think it's January ninth. It'll be the, the second Tuesday in January, and the parade winners will be there at that meeting, and we'll take pictures with them and all the good stuff. But I know you're all dying to know who the winners are. And the overall best in honorable mention was Texas Tile. In third place was Texas Trash. Second place was Bastrop and Buschers State Parks. And first place was Paribbick Plumbing and Air Conditioning. And the best pedestrian group was the City of Bastrop Bollywood, which was, that was just, that was so much fun to watch them. And honorable mention for best pedestrian group was pickleball. And if you were not at the parade, you missed the opportunity to watch people play pickleball as they moved down the parade, which was awesome. They had the net between them and were playing pickleball. The best car group, honorable mention, was the Corvettes. And the winner of the best car group was the Jeeps. And the best emergency vehicle, clearly Councilmember Kirkland was not one of the judges, the best emergency vehicle went to the Elgin Fire Department. So we will have all of those winners with us in January. With that, Colin, we can jump in. Keep in mind that these pictures go all the way back to November fourth, which feels like about twenty-seven years ago. But you will see that, I have some photos from the Veterans March that was done during the Hot Rod and Heroes Car Show. And you'll see a picture of Commissioner Hamner and I with the recipients that were recognized at the Veterans event. And then on the right-hand side of that page, Colin, you'll see the city manager and I both attended the Bastrop High School Navy Junior ROTC Annual Military Inspection, and they just did an outstanding job. And we both really enjoyed being at that event. And you can see, it was a gorgeous day outside. Then that next row down, I, one of my favorite things to do, and I get to do it in the fall and in the spring, is spend some time with our students. On the left-hand side, every year that I've been mayor, in the fall, I am interviewed by the ninth graders at Circa. And they are learning how to be inquisitive reporters, and they prepare for a press conference. And they ask some pretty tough questions, but they are a really, really fun group, and I always enjoy visiting with them. And one girl walked up to me and said, "You must have been mayor a long time. My sister interviewed you and she's in college." And it was just like, so I was a little hurtful, but I got over it. In the middle, and you guys heard me talk about this a couple of meetings ago, or one meeting ago, I met with the Cedar Creek Intermediate. They came to check out the rec center. And these are the kids that English is a second language. And so they go on field trips to learn how to interact and ask questions. And they're holding up the fidgets that the rec center staff helped them make. It was pipe cleaners that they put beads on, so it looked like a piece of corn, but it was also a finger fidget thing, which we know with kids that are used to playing video games, it's always good for them to have something to do with their hands. And then over on the right, I was interviewed by the Cedar Creek Intermediate Student Council. And to the left of that picture is Toni Malone, who is a teacher there at Cedar Creek Intermediate, and she is also the sponsor for the student council. And I just want to give a shout out to her for the extra time that she dedicates to the kids. And they're learning a lot about being on student council and being in leadership in their school. And Ms. Malone sent me an email, and I responded. And her response was, "I didn't think you were going to respond." So she was very, very happy that I, that I was at the, at the, able to meet with the kids. Then on the bottom of that page, the, this is a ribbon cutting that we did with the Youth Advisory Council. Hopefully, all of you have not only gone and checked out the mural, but have had your, done the appropriate selfie with the mural and posted it. It was a lot of fun. And if you want some additional information, you ought to visit with Councilmember Kirkland about the mural. He's got some really neat inside stories. The first responders luncheon was the chamber luncheon. They recognized the first responders, and I wanted to show their picture. And then it just didn't work out layout-wise. But I started the morning with the, with the event and the parade and the car show. And then I was at the red, white, and blue dinner that night, and I always enjoy attending that. And then there's a second page of pictures. On November fourth, we celebrated Arbor Day, and this is a picture of Barbara Walansky with her two daughters and her two granddaughters. We were so sorry to lose Barbara. And that was the picture of her presenting at the Board's Appreciation Dinner. And we planted the tree that her granddaughter's leaning on. So that was a really, really a neat day. We did our tree lighting, as we always do traditionally, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And that's a picture of Mr. Owens, who is such a great person in our community. And he was playing the piano for the choir, the, from several different schools that sang for us that night. And then the next picture shows Lost Pines Art Center. They had their Light Up the Lost Pines on Friday night and their art fest on the next day. And all true confessions here, that is my son, who is wearing the Longhorn Orange shirt, and that is not an accident. And one of the events was getting people to add to the alligator. And I think several of us added some things to the alligator. My son made a submarine, because he served in the Navy in a submarine. And so he was adding a submarine to an alligator, which I didn't know alligators would have. But I guess in the art world, you can have most anything. Then on the far right, Run This Town 5K was done to raise money for Mina. And I worked the water stop with the recreation group. That was always fun. And the next row, you'll see Alive After Five, a JOL ribbon cutting. Kids Teeth, we did a ribbon cutting. And on the far right was Austin Title and First Centennial Mortgage did their second annual chili cook-off. So we were judges. Those are the three of us that were judging the chili cook-off, and that is a lot of pressure. I'm not sure whether the student council or the chili judging was more pressure, but it's a little, it gets a little intense. Then below that, you'll see that I spent some time at the Opera House, both for the Free to Learn, the Hopewell and Roswell School, and also the Youth Academy put on their plays. And I hosted the November Farm Street, and I attended the December Farm Street. And I always like to support the, Feed the Need with their gobble kits. So it's, it's been a busy time during November and December. On this next page, you will see that I wanted to take just a moment and recognize former Fire Chief Carl Spooner. Mr. Spooner passed on November twenty-fourth, and his funeral was on December second. And some of you attended the funeral, and some of you may have wondered why traffic was stopped on Chestnut for a few minutes. They did the last call service for him on December second. Some people don't know that he served in the Volunteer Fire Department for over forty years. His, his son and his grandson have also served in Bastrop's Fire Department. It's a family that has a heart of service for this community. Mr. Spooner was the fire chief from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen eighty-five, when everything about the department was voluntary. There was a junior high, junior high school renovation, and you would now call that Mina Elementary, but that was the junior high. And they were renovating it. And one of the things they were doing was redoing the floors. And it was a different time, back in nineteen seventy-six. And when you're sanding and putting the lacquer and all the things that you did for the floor, you were probably smoking. And one of the workers put his cigarette out in the pile of sawdust. And turns out, not such a great combination. And in the middle of the night, that school caught on fire. And at Mr. Spooner's funeral, there was a man talking, and he said, "People don't recognize what he did for this town." Mr. Spooner worked for the National Guard for a very, very long time. And in nineteen seventy-six, there was not mutual aid, and you were just kind of on your own. But because of the relationships that he had, Bergstrom sent their fire truck, Austin sent a ladder truck, Elgin came, and they were able to keep the fire maintained to the school. And the man that was speaking was a little kid and lived in this house that was across the street. And he and his family stood outside the house, wondering if their house was going to catch on fire. And so that's why I said, "He saved the town." In full disclosure, Mr. Spooner's wife is a woman named Ruth Spooner, and Ruth is my husband's first cousin. So yes, it's family. But despite the fact that he's family to me, I do, I did want to recognize the amount of service that the Spooner family and that Mr. Spooner himself did. Chief Rosales is under the weather and wasn't able to be here tonight. That picture, you'll see that there is a very solemn service. They read over the dispatch that it was his last call to service, and that's why there is a fire uniform without a fireman. So just wanted to take a moment to recognize Mr. Spooner's service. Colin, if you go to the next page, these are all the things that I promised to do between December seventh and the thirteenth, and I'm very happy to tell you that I did them all. And the Bastrop Board of Realtors Luncheon, I swore in their officers for next year, and I gave an update for the city. And several of us were at the rendezvous. Several of us did many of these things. And it was, it's always nice to see other council members for us, for us to all out, be out in the public. One of the things that I didn't list on December tenth that happened is, some of you may know Bob Malden. He has a show called Expedition Texas, and he did a special on Bastrop and the history of Bastrop, and included the parade and all the activities that were happening on December tenth. So we'll keep, he interviewed me in the museum, and then he came up on the balcony and shot some more film. So we'll be watching for the Bastrop edition of Expedition Texas. I did attend the Government Affairs Meeting this morning, and I was a judge at the Generation Citizens Civics Day, which took place at the George Carver Museum in Austin. Now, between now and the next council meeting, there's also a lot of fun things going on. I want to call your attention to December sixteenth, which is the Joyous Christmas Concert. That's open to the public. That'll be at the PAC. Make sure everybody knows about that. Council, reminding you that a week from today at two-thirty, we'll be having a strategy workshop. And I listed when the offices would be closed. And our next city council meeting will be on January tenth. So with that, Councilmember Lee, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
I sure do. Hello, and good evening, everyone. That was a lot. I'm like, I don't think I did a whole lot. But I do want to say, I feel like we have one of the best mayors in central Texas. She makes the point to, to go in every little pocket and corner of Bastrop to connect with the community, and I really appreciate that effort.
Thank you.
I did attend my Planning and Zoning and Library Board meeting. I also attended the Library Open House, which was a lot of fun this past weekend. First time doing that. Talked to some of the memory, the members of the library, friends of the library. Had some real interesting conversations with them. They are in need of volunteers, she wanted me to mention, and student volunteers, so that they can give out some of the scholarship money that they have for students. So anyone watching or knows a student that is looking for scholarship opportunities, there's one. I did a tour of the Fairview Cemetery. Robbie Sanders reached out to me and wanted me to tour the cemetery. And she's an awesome tour guide. I've lived here all my life, and she showed me corners of the cemetery I didn't know existed. But I enjoyed the tour and the history behind it, and hope, hope down the road, that becomes a tour destination in our city with a tour guide and everything. I did do the Historical Society Rendezvous. I did the Holiday Homes Tour. I've been trying to do that tour for the last five years, and it never worked out with my schedule. And this year, it did work out. I got to all but two, and that was only because there was a line, and it was three o'clock, and I was hungry, and I had another event. So, and some of the houses, as I walked in, I, it didn't dawn on me that I'd already been at those houses for meeting people, until I got into like a certain area, and I'd be like, "This looks familiar." But a couple of them, I had never been in. I loved the tour. The homes are beautiful. Wish they made them like that today. I did not get to do the Christmas tree lighting. I didn't get to do the parade. Unfortunately, I did some traveling during this time. But I, I also Saturday got invited to attend the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet, where they honor community activists in the community from the work that they did in the year, throughout the year. So I was a special guest there of the NAACP President, Nelson Linder. So I enjoy doing that. But I was texting home, making sure y'all did not get rained out while I was at the banquet, making sure that that went okay. And I understand the rain started after the parade. So that was great. So I got a little stuff in through the traveling, but I also wanted to make sure that everyone has a very safe and healthy Christmas. Please take care of yourself and enjoy your family. And remember that the season is not always jolly for everyone. And reach, so reach out to someone who may not have someone to share Christmas with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Kirkland, what would you like to share tonight?
So, Mayor, what's your current activity count for the year?
I think I'm at three forty-seven.
Excellent. So I, I went to a number of the things that you listed up there as well. I had fifteen things on my list. I'm just going to read a couple of them. So one of them, I, I was a judge in the Veterans Day Car Show for the Bastrop Area Cruisers, and I judge unrestored pre-nineteen seventies cars. I sang bass, Christmas carols in the First Friday Art Walk with Carrie Fossler. I rode in the city float in the lighted Christmas parade with bells on. And last, I just wanted to comment this, this last weekend, I had a coyote run into my backyard on Main Street and called the police, because you're not allowed to shoot coyotes in the city limits, yourself anyway. And it was a whole thing, and the coyote eventually got away. But yeah, just watch for your pets, I guess.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Kirkland. Councilmember Plunkett?
Let's see. I just wanted to congratulate staff and everybody who participated in the, putting on the parade on Saturday. It was amazing, incredible turnout. Downtown was really hopping, and that's always fun to see. I went to the Fairview Cemetery Advisory Board meeting. They only meet quarterly, so that was my first one. And I wanted to call your attention, and I know the mayor mentioned it in her things to do, but on December seventeenth, they're doing wreaths across America. I believe we're one of three hundred or so cemeteries where they're doing that across the country. And I wanted to recognize Sherri Ray for putting that together. We're going to have the Boy Scouts coming out and help with that. Troop twenty-ten, thanks for, for doing that. They're going to put, I think it's six hundred and ninety-two wreaths on veterans' graves out there. So I think that's a great event and one that we should support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Yes, I've been asked to lay the wreath for the war babies. So it's, it's going to be a neat day. All right. Christmas birthday, Councilmember Crouch, what would you like to share with us this evening?
Well, November, December was really busy for the city. And thank you to the staff for the car show work, for the parade work, for the downtown Christmas work, the lighting and everything. The town is, it was really nice to be in the past couple of months, really. And the parade was awesome. And the house tour was a lot of fun. My house was in between three houses, so I got all the foot traffic in the front. So it was nice to get to talk to everybody as they were going between the houses. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Well, I got none of that stuff done.
You guys, things were hopping at your place, though.
Yeah, I'm a little busy at work at this time of year, so, sorry. I did go to the Hunter's Crossing PID meeting, and they, that committee does a tremendous job taking care of that PID for the Hunter's Crossing. And we haven't had any Historical Landmark Commission meetings, because there hasn't been any applications. But other than that, I have not gotten to any of those events, except for work. Sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, how, how many years have you been in business?
November was twenty-seven.
Yes. So I don't approve of you saying I didn't do anything. I think you've been extremely busy. All right, Council, thank you so much. City Manager, the floor is yours.
Well, I will tell you, my report is rather thin. As you know, I was out and then out with the flu. So I would just like to recognize Police Depart, Police Detective Matt Wagner, who celebrates twenty-eight years with us. And when I, I don't know about y'all, but when I see nineteen ninety-four up there, it's, it doesn't feel any years ago. I'm starting to feel really old. You guys covered the Lost Pines Christmas events. I was under the weather, could not participate. But I was watching all of the Facebook posts and all of the social media. And staff, you're right, does an outstanding job with these events. The amount of coordination that it takes to put them on is just unparalleled. Gingerbread House winner, we're a bit competitive internally with staff. Finance and Utilities won the Gingerbread Contest this year. And I joke that they won because I was sick and I couldn't play, because my house was going to light up. Anyway.
There's always next year.
Yes, there's always next year. So January tenth, quarterly presentation. So January 10th, quarterly presentations from our cultural assets. We have the proclamation for MLK and then also the proclamation for Black History Month. You've already mentioned the strategic planning meeting for the 20th. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. We're glad to have you back and on the road to recovery. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, do you have a question?
No, I just want to let the City Manager know that watch out if you enter that gingerbread contest. They are serious. I mean, I entered one and mine looked like a little shack compared to that. I was embarrassed myself saying, oh gosh, I'm never doing that again.
They hide from each other so they can't tell. The different departments can't tell what's going on. All right, Council, that's everything for that part of our agenda. We don't have any work sessions. We're moving on to staff and board reports. Item 9A, received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending October 31st, 2022. Ms. Waldron's coming forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a fairly short report. It's our first month of the budget year. So not a lot of activity for us to be already having budget issues. Revenue was up and sales tax wasn't a huge part of it. It was really development fees. We received one payment from one development that was over $350,000 in October. So not usually expecting to see that. But that fee will cover all of the costs going forward with that development all this year and probably going into next year. So as far as under forecast, cemetery fund is just slightly under our projected forecast, but I'm sure that will be made up going out throughout the year. And expenditures are all within forecast at this point.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron? All right. Well, she's not going anywhere because we are going to, we're moving on to item 9B. Received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2022.
Yeah, like we're going backwards today.
I know.
So we don't normally give a September final report until we've had a chance to close September. Right now, we're actually in our audit. So this is just a very high level. You'll actually get the full report in February when the auditors come and bring the annual comprehensive financial report. But revenue ended pretty good in general front, 2% over forecast. Sales tax was high, almost 8% over forecast, almost 14% over year. Development fees actually ended up leveling out by the end of the fiscal year. And I just wanted to recognize recreation because we were making some estimates on what that revenue was gonna look like and they ended up 64% over the budget. So impact fees, it's an estimate, same scenario, but obviously we were behind. So we're continuing, I have a five-year forecast for impact fees, but it all has to do with development. So on the expense side, I just wanted to note, based on the financial policy, that we did make a transfer between departments, $20,700. And that was just to cover some shortfalls in a couple of the departments. The details were actually in the report. Any questions?
Excellent. Any questions for Ms. Waldron? All right. Thank you. All right, Council, we're on the top of page three, citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, we're done with citizen comments. We're moving to the consent agenda. We have items 11A through 11F. Does anyone wish to pull something from the agenda? Madam Secretary, if you'd please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the November 8th, 2022 regular meeting and December 5th, 2022 special meeting. Item 11B, consider action to approve resolution number dash 2022 dash 19 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving the 2023 council meeting schedule attached as Exhibit A and providing an effective date. Item 11C, consider action to approve resolution number R dash 2022 dash 115 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas confirming appointment by the Mayor of Mary Butler to place three of the housing authority as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Item 11D, consider action to approve resolution number R dash 2022 dash 116 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a public improvement plan agreement with Hunt Communities for the Colony Mud 1D, Section 4, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date.
I move to approve.
Item 11E, sorry, consider action to approve resolution number R dash 2022 dash 117 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas to update the grantees authorized officer for the FY 2023 Victim Assistance Grant number 4472401, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11F, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2022 dash 27 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023 to address project carryover, fleet orders not received by the end of FY 2022, and personnel reorganization in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I didn't realize there was a second page. I moved to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Council, you're voting on the consent agenda items 11A through 11F. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Sorry for interrupting you, Anne. Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Council, we're in the middle of page four. We're on our items for individual consideration. We're gonna start with item 12A. Consider action to approve ordinance number 2022 dash 30 of the City Council of the City of Texas authorizing the issuance of the City of Bastrop, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2023, levying an ad valorem tax and pledging certain surplus revenues in support of the certificates, approving the official statement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and other agreements relating to the sale and issuance of the certificates, and ordaining other matters relating to the issuance of the certificates, repealing all ordinances and actions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. So our bond sale was conducted today and so I do have our financial advisors and our bond counsel here. But to recap, this issuance was originally brought forward 13 million for general fund, 44 million for water wastewater projects. We have gone back and revisited the cash flow and the timing and have pulled back on the wastewater projects a little bit just due to the timing of that. We really want to issue when we need the money and we don't want to issue too much and be sitting on it. So we did change the water wastewater portion to 27 million and feel comfortable with that. And so I'm gonna let Dan Wood Miller talk about the sale.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you, Tracy. The sale results came in today, or the bid came in today. Leading up to that, we applied to Standard and Poor's for a bond rating to be applied to this issue. Your outstanding rating for tax-backed general obligation issues is double A. Standard and Poor's affirmed that rating of double A. I wanted to just mention a couple of their comments. They say the rating reflects their view that the city's growing community outside Austin includes a rapidly growing wealth and income metrics. That's an important part that they're recognizing, the growing and that, because that's gonna probably take you to that next double A plus. You're two notches from the highest rating possible of triple A. And so the factors that go into a bond rating are the economy, your financial performance, your debt levels, and your management. And part of that economy is those indicators you're looking at, wealth and income, and how those fare. So I think that's important to note just moving forward, that you have that upward pressure from their viewpoint. The other key, just a reminder, the bond rating is great feedback for you all, but it's really what investors are making their decisions on whether to buy or not. And so the other comments were consistently positive operating results leading to healthy reserves, which will likely result in a one-time spin-down in fiscal '23, and formalized practices and policies that support positive budgetary results and a strong institutional framework score. So much in line with the presentation you just had. They note those same consistencies and positive results. With that affirmation of double A, as the board shows, we had a very strong sale today, a lot of interest. 11 bids, which is near one of the highest number of bids that we see come in on any given sale. Frost Bank out of San Antonio submitted the low bid at 4.011345%, to be exact. And then the others were fairly tight with Hilltop and RW Baird following up on Frost along with the other bidders. One thing to note, after we get the bids in, we resize the issue to fully fund the 40 million of projects and also make sure we don't overissue because we have premium involved. The good news there is with that resizing, the interest rate came just under 4%. So 3.995289%. So even though rates have been rising, we've stayed within the 3% to 4% range one more time. So with that, I'll be glad to answer questions on the bids or the rating. Or Barb Fowler with McCall Parkers is here to help you through any ordinance questions.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Kirkland?
On the ordinance, it's a template. It's missing the values. And so I was curious what it is we can approve.
Sure. No, that's exactly right. And what's in your agenda packet was the form of the ordinance. It was completed after the pricing information was received this morning. And it has been completed now. I don't think it was completed in time to get a replacement in your packets. But you do have the final ordinance completed in front of you for consideration tonight. That's the way we've handled your prior bond sales and how we've done the other. The city has it in front of you. I'm sorry if you don't have it in front of you. But we do have that available. It has been completed. One consideration for a motion, the way some have done this, sometimes we'll have bond sales that'll occur at 12 o'clock noon, bids come in at maybe 10 o'clock. And in that case, we don't even have time to prepare the final document. So in your motion for consideration of this item, you can direct us to complete that information with the pricing information that Dan went over today. But just to confirm, it has been completed. We do have that available for you. It just wasn't available in time to get in front of your agenda package for replacement. And I apologize for that.
Yeah, it's always, it's the hot off the presses, so.
No, I mean, I get it. It's hot. Alan, I think, I guess my question is for you. It's okay that we pass ordinance without having numbers in it? You were able to do that with the information that's in the staff report and the briefing that's presented to you?
Okay.
We don't have to have that for this type of ordinance.
Okay. And one other thing, just for the, I don't necessarily have been through this process before, but for those that haven't, additional comfort there. Part of this, the next step in this process, it's to file a full transcript of these bond proceedings with the Texas Attorney General's Office. One thing they'll do is go through and make sure we've done everything according to state law requirements. Before we can close on these bonds, they'll issue a legal opinion confirming the validity of this debt, including the action taken tonight. On top of that, you'll also receive an opinion that my firm will render, confirming the validity of this debt under state law as well as federal law tax requirements to confirm the exemption of interest on these bonds from investors. So you do get legal opinions covering those items. But I do want to reiterate, this is very common practice where unfortunately you have a form of it in your agenda packets. We complete the document that day of an actual meeting with the city council, school board, commissioners court. Timing just doesn't always allow us to have that. But as your lawyer, the city's lawyer, we do have that completed tonight based on the information that Dan went over in those final pricing terms.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I also had a question about that because here it says the certificate would be 57 million. But then I went back and I looked at the notice because I wanted to see what the notice looked like to the public notice. And it advertised 40 million, it advertised 40 million, 13 million for general debt and 27 million. So I was wondering why the difference.
Now, I believe the legal notice had the 57, 57 or 54 million. I forget what we, 57 million. I wonder if you're looking at some information maybe the city put out that may have tightened those numbers up? And that's not something I know about.
That's why I went over the numbers a second ago. So originally, when we did the intent to issue, we did an intent for 57 million. We've gone back and brought that down.
Okay.
And I asked, I called our financial advisor and said, you know, can we issue less if that is what we want to do? And he said, absolutely.
Okay.
Can't go the other way.
Yeah, I can't do more, but I can definitely do less.
And Councilmember Lee, that really is a discussion through sitting with Trey and sitting with Tracy about what we're actually burning through. It is horrible to have money sitting in the bank that you're now paying interest on that we're not spending through. So as she went through the burn rate, as we went through the projects, the decision was made to reduce that amount.
Okay. And I just had a general stupid question. What prompts the need to do a certificate of obligations? Is there something, is that done annually?
Projects.
Something that prompts it?
Projects, timelines, contracts. So a contract was brought to you in October, I believe, for the GMP2 on the water plant, $34 million. I mean, it's a multi-year contract, but I have to make sure we have money in the bank when the pay-ups come in. And so we are currently in the process of building a wastewater plant and a water plant. So we have a lot of high-dollar projects. So we're trying to lay that out in a cash flow to determine when we need to issue.
So it's, when we go through the budget process, the funding sources identified. And so when they're identified with bonds, but it's a really good question. We have not issued bonds every single year. You have to have a project to support that.
Thank you.
Good question. No such thing as a dumb question. It's a great question. No. And City Manager, you're comfortable with this bond issuance as well? Councilmember Kirkland?
Where does this put us cumulatively on debt on the city?
I would have to look. I think we're over 100 million.
When I first came on council, it was like 120 at the time.
Yeah. In the budget book, it states on the introductory page where we were before this issuance. So that will give you.
I have one more quick question. So in payment of these bonds back, I understand it's ad valorem tax.
So the 13 million is, but the 40 million will be from water wastewater rates and impact fees.
And does that include annexed properties?
Annexed properties?
Taxes, ad valorem taxes on annexed properties because it said within the city limits.
If they are, have been annexed and are paying city taxes.
It does still include them even though they're annexed. I just want to.
Once you're annexed, you're inside the city limits. All right, Council, any other questions for bond, bond counsel, CFO, City Manager, Councilmember Lee?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee.
A second.
And a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Everybody clear on what you're voting on? Any further questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. All right, Council, we are moving on to item 12B. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2022 dash 84 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas to award a professional contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated to provide professional services for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Project in the amount not to exceed $290,000. Attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Moore?
Good evening. I'm so excited. This is my first presentation to the council as a city employee. Super psyched.
Do not mess up. It's a lot of pressure.
And that it's this project. Let's see if I know how to use this. Okay, so this is about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Just as a reminder, we did have a park, we do have a current Parks Master Plan. It was written in 2008 and it was updated in 2015. So with our growing community demographics and all that, it's time for us to find out what all of these new folks think, what our old folks are wanting, what all in general, everybody is needing in our park system as well as recreation. Fortunately, Fortunately, in fiscal year '22, we were awarded a $250,000 grant from the St. David's Foundation, which was quite a blessing, to do this work. Also, it just kind of makes sense that while we're doing this, that we check out the feasibility study for a sports complex, and BEDC will be providing $50,000 towards that feasibility study. This is kind of hard to read, but what I wanted to do was show you where our parks were. We currently have 11 total parks. We have three regional parks, which is Fisherman's, Bob Bryant, and Mayfest. And then we have our eight neighborhood parks, which is Hunter's Crossing Ferry, Fireman's Park, Kerr, the Delgado Park, Jewel Hodges, Baccon, and also the Bark Park. Yeah, you know, we're really blessed that we've got beautiful parks. We really do have some really nice parks. We, our parks are both passive and active, which is also very exciting. One of the goals of this plan is to make sure that we hear from everyone. Engagement is super important as part of this plan to reach those that are, have been in the past historically underserved. We're going out and about. We're doing the traditional things like public meetings and surveys and QR codes and things like that. But it is also our intent to reach out to the community through their community groups to have ambassadors to find that information. Sometimes it's easier and you get more information from someone who you know. So, if we have ambassadors for the program going out, getting that information from the people they know, we feel like we'll get more information back. It's really important for that part of it. So, our goal is to have a draft plan on May, in May of this year, and then to have a final plan to bring back to you in June. It is staff's recommendation that you approve. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Moore, it's my understanding that in an effort, because I do agree that the engagement is really critical to this, I believe you're going to utilize some of our boards in that engagement.
So, our Parks Board would definitely be our steering committee. We're also putting together an advisory group of folks that, and a lot of the other boards, like the DI Board and different boards, the cultural arts boards, those boards will be coming together, trying to get, we'll be trying to get some representation from that.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Well, I was happy to hear you say the Hunter's Crossing Park because during our Hunter's Crossing meeting, it was brought up that some of the things needed to be improved. And we were letting them know that the master plan is coming. So, hopefully, maybe you can reach out on somebody off that Pid Board.
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe we can help you with the Hunter's Crossing people to get that more involved so they can tell you what they're looking for. Because they had some great ideas you just need to hear.
Well, it's, while we love those folks that come to every public meeting, we know that there's a whole bunch of more people.
Oh, yeah.
That have to cook dinner for their families when they get off of work. And so, our goal is to go out and find them where they are normally instead of having to pull them to a separate meeting as well.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Councilmember Crouch?
I had a couple of questions. One of them, and thank you for the proposal. It was so detailed. It was really, really easy to follow along with all the pricing on it. On the website piece of it, I saw a charge, and I'm kind of looking for it now, for the website that StanTech was charging for us, but it also said that the city would be doing all the work. So, I was just wondering what.
So, they'll be doing the design work. And that part of it, they're going to have to do a lot of training to get us to know how to do it. So, that we'll be keeping up the most current information on the website. Branding's a real big part of making sure people understand what we're asking for, you know, where they're giving their information. Did I answer your question?
I think so. So, it's for training for our staff to do our own website.
And to develop the website themselves. We won't be developing anything. We'll be updating it.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Another question was the Parks Board. I saw that they just had one meeting with the Parks Board, and it probably.
The Parks Board will be the steering committee. So, there will be a lot of input. Now, they, as the consultant, they'll have staff interacting with, doing a lot of the interacting, getting the information. So, we'll stay in constant contact with the Parks Board. They're a vital part of this whole process.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say because I just had one meeting listed with them. So, thanks for clarifying that, that there's going to be multiple meetings with them, that they'll be on the steering committee. And the other question was, do you know how they're going to pick the citizens or the six members of the staff, not staff, but the board?
So, as in all of our committees, volunteerism, you know, if people want to volunteer and be a part of it, come on, you know, be a part of it. We'll be selecting those people. We're hoping that once we get the word out, people will come to us with their unique interests. But we'll be selecting those people along with the steering committee and that kind of thing.
And I was also glad to see that there was a couple of citizen group meetings, one before and then one after the thing was drafted.
Right.
So, that everybody can see what actually they're going to get for all the input that they've put in. So, I challenge everybody, all the citizens, to actually provide input for this survey because our parks are a huge deal, and we can't get what you want unless you have input. So, please, if you ask for input and have meetings for that, please attend those workshops.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. If you're, if anyone's hearing the sound of the voice, they've been asked, correct? You're wanting input from everyone. Councilmember Lee?
Consider yourself.
Would there be any reason why this would exceed the $290,000?
It is our responsibility for that not to happen. 290,000 is the contract.
Right. I have a lot of questions, but I think my questions will be better served once we get the plan because I have like specific questions about the parks and maintenance and what needs to be done. I kind of think that I'm going to hold off on that until we actually, what's the timeframe on completion?
So, we're hoping to be back by May.
Okay.
So, that, and that's, that's an incredibly fast turnaround. So, you know, that's our, that's our target. Let me say that. It's a, it's a target date for that to happen. Yeah, that's quick. That's really, really quick. One of the things that you'll find in the scope of work is the whole recommendations of maintenance, the recommendation of how to find additional parkland, those kind of things. That's, that's exciting to me.
I actually, as I always do, researched something, a plan that they did for another city, and it was very, it was as big as our comprehensive plan book, it seemed like, online anyway. But it was, it was very, very detailed. It broke down every park they had and specifically outlined what that park looks like, looks like now, what, how much use they're getting out of that park, the cost it would be to upgrade based on their recommendations. So, it was, it was very, very comprehensive. That's why I was like, maybe I should just wait and see what they come back with before I start all these questions.
Your input on all of this is extremely important.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Council, oh, Councilmember Crouch?
I have one more question. You said that the plan will be due in June or completed in June, and I noticed that they had 10 months in their proposal, I think.
So, this is, there has been some delay because of the contract. The original scope would have given that 10 months. That's why our target date is May. A lot of that has to do with the grant as well. It could take 10 months. But we have talked to the consultant, and they, they understand that we are on a time crunch here and have, have expressed that they will work as hard as they can to make sure we meet that deadline. But it is a target. I mean, I think that it's fair to say that is extremely fast for something like this to happen.
So, Ms. Moore, would it be reasonable for counsel to expect that if it, if the draft's not ready in May, that there'll be some sort of an update? We're at 50%?
Yes, ma'am.
We're at 70% this part's done?
Absolutely.
This is what we have left?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Crouch, is that it? All right, I got no lights on. Councilmember Kirkland?
So, I'm the council liaison for the Parks Board, and so I attend all of their meetings. And this has gone before the Parks Board, and they are excited and looking forward to getting started. And so, to kick that off, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Good job, Ms. Moore. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Good luck. And I heard her say, absolutely no matter what, it will be done on May of 2023. Just kidding, just kidding. All right, we're moving on to item 12C. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2022-28 to adopt the 2023 schedule of uniform submittal dates for site plans, place type zoning changes, plats, public improvement plans, and neighborhood regulating plans in accordance with the Bastrop Building Block Code, Section 2.3.004, annual adoption of schedule of uniform submittal dates, and the Bastrop Building Block Technical Manual, Section 1.2.002, uniform submittal dates as shown in exhibit A, and move to include on the January 10th, 2023 consent agenda for the second reading. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So, tonight, we're considering the adoption of our annual schedule for middle dates and reviews for development projects. So, in 2019, with House Bill, we call House Bill 3167, we refer to all time, which then got codified into the local government code, the legislature put some timelines on review of specific development applications, mostly surrounding subdivision plats. This was intended to provide a predictable upfront timeline for developers to follow. And with that, we implemented a specific schedule so, that's public, adopted and published every year to give developers those dates and that, so they know when everything will be reviewed. So, we have Monday submittal dates and then Thursday review dates. So, to hit the timeline, something that's submitted on a Monday that's complete, so that's one of the things, they have to have all the information turned in on Monday, then gets reviewed and the comments go out nine business days later. This also helps us with our notification. Some, some plats require some notification. We also adopt a schedule for the zoning applications because those have timelines associated with them for, for notice in the local government code as well. And we do have to make some holiday adjustments every year in November and December for 2023. Our December meeting will be moved up to the third Thursday for planning and zoning. It's normally the last Thursday of the month, but there's no changes for November for next year. So, we have several different schedules. We have ones for plats that require planning and zoning commission approval, zoning concept schemes, and neighborhood regulating plans, and zoning concept schemes that require going to planning and zoning commission and city council. And then we have plats that are administratively approved, and then site development plans and public improvement plans, which are also administratively approved. So, this gives us a 30-day timeline for plot approval, which includes P&amp;Z action. One of the things that we like to stress to P&amp;Z, it's important that we are able to meet quorum, so we're able to hear the plats on the schedule. And to do that, one of the code changes that we had in the B3 code is that the ZBA members can serve as alternates to the planning and zoning commission, so we can ensure that we meet quorum. And staff recommends adoption of the annual schedule.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Bills? All right, I would like to open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing?
No, mayor.
All right, I'm officially closing the public hearing. Councilmember Lee?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? This will be placed on the consent agenda for our meeting on January 10th. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We're on our last page. We have two items left. We're on item 12D. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2022-16 of the City Council of the City of Texas, updating the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, adding Chapter 13, Article 13.13, entitled Licensing Agreement for Attachments to Utility Facilities, adding Section 13.13.001, General Provisions, adding Section 13.13.002, Standard Licensing Agreement for Attachments to Utility Facilities, and providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the January 10th, 2023 agenda for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Okay, I know it sounds really complicated, but it's really not that complicated. It's a license agreement. But let me, let me go back. Last updated, January 17. In May of 2022, Bastrop Power and Light hired Snyder Engineering to actually perform this review of the licensing agreement and the ordinance and the fees. And then, so they, they reviewed the agreement. It was also sent over to Boherquas Law Firm, and resident helped participate in the review. And so, it's, it's gone through months of going back and forth and being reviewed, and they have updated the fees, and they've also established how those fees get changed every year, or there's a method in which those fees get updated annually. And so, I am not the expert. I was the facilitator in getting this ordinance updated. So, if you have too technical of questions, I'm hoping that either Alan will jump in or Trey will jump in. But that's what this is. And so, it's an updated agreement. It's a, it's a right-of-way agreement for people to attach to our electric poles.
Mr. Boherquas, if I remember correctly, we got, we, the municipalities of Texas, got quite a bit of assistance from the state on what we were able to. And so, part of this is making sure that we're, we're in compliance with state law. Is that correct?
Correct, mayor. And by saying assistance, you mean limitations on what we were able to do?
Pretty well dictated.
Yes, yes.
And so, this complies with those state laws. Resident Pullman, your assistant city attorney, went over it with great detail.
So, we're just trying to make sure that we're in compliance with state law?
Yes.
And now, we believe that we are?
I believe this conforms to state law, yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
How solid is our GIS and do we know what's attached to every pole?
That GIS system is continuing to be built out.
So, we don't know today?
So.
Or we do know?
I do know that one of the, it's included in our agreement with LCRA. They're actually going to do a poll inventory as they go through our system this year. I think it was a part of that agreement.
And, yeah. Part of what necessitated this was exactly that. What's where, who's paying, and making sure that the city is receiving the revenue, actually that the residents are receiving the revenue because all of those assets belong to the residents.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. One thing that I will mention is that our next meeting isn't until January 10th. So, if anybody's got any comments or if they're reviewing things, there's ample opportunity. This is not the final vote on it. With that, is everyone's clear on what they're voting for for the first reading of the ordinance? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. This gets us to item 12E. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2022-121 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with focused advocacy to offer full service in legislative and regulatory consulting services as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, mayor and council. As you know, we entered a letter of intent with Sunway Hospitality to look at the feasibility of building a hotel across through the convention center. Part of that is an opportunity that we're going to talk about tonight, to receive an additional rebate. So in the state of Texas, the hotel occupancy tax that's collected is about 13%. 7% comes to the city, 6% goes to the state of Texas. And what we're asking some help with tonight from Mr. Carr and his group and Focused Advocacy is to allow us to become an eligible city. And when I say eligible city, there's legislation that's been written. About 47 cities in the state are eligible for that type of rebate, to receive the state's additional 6% that they collect. But you have to be on the list. So what we're talking about tonight is entering an agreement with Focused Advocacy to seek out that, that bill, that legislation, and have our name added to that, so that we will be that 48th eligible city. And once we're eligible, we believe the hotel across the street will be a project that we can apply this rebate to and quicken our return on investment.
So for clarity for the public, our name will not be added to the bill. There will be a description that we might fit quite nicely into that description.
Yes.
But the public won't see the City of Bastrop listed on that bill.
That's correct. It could be a city in a county of under 200,000 that is, has Highway 71 running through it and Colorado River, something like that. Something to that effect.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Also have.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
I was just, I also have Mr. Carr here, who's much better at answering questions if we need him. So go ahead.
I was just making sure that I might understand this, that once, if we're lucky enough to get approved to be part of this action, that it's, we're going to use it for this project, but then we can, we'll always be one of the cities, and we can use it again for another project? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we never have to go again and file for that to be one of those limited cities?
That is correct.
So it'll always be a bonus for us for every project we can, that qualifies in the future, correct?
Correct. And it's my understanding this, this legislation also allows you to collect some sales tax as well.
So it's a tool in the toolbox and for appropriate projects that fall within the parameter, and most of those parameters are geared around convention centers.
Correct, and tourism.
But once we do it, we can always use it for other tools.
Okay. I can't see Mr. Carr, because he's behind. Have we said anything that makes you nervous? Are you okay with everything? Do you want to address council? Were you done, Trey?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Carr, if you would tell everybody who you are. Not everyone knows you.
Mayor, council, good to see y'all. Thank y'all for having me here. Trey did a nice job of explaining the overall, official term of this program is called the Qualified Hotel Program. And you're exactly right. We would bracket the City of Bastrop into the bill. You don't do it by name, but we get creative with brackets all the time in these statutes. Only thing I was going to say, mayor, is when y'all engage us, this is certainly focused on this program and getting y'all across the goal line for it. But we represent our, a number of cities around the state of all sizes, and y'all would be part of our collective client base. And we work on a number of things, and it was just interesting to sit here. Poll attachments, the shot clock bill, all things we're very involved with and will be going forward. So you will get the added advantage of us also not just working on this, but being part of it.
And we also have some interest in a quiet zone, which is also associated with the hotel, and I believe you guys have some experience with that as well.
Yes, mayor.
Okay. Excellent. Council, any questions for Mr. Carr? Councilmember Kirkland?
Hello there. Nice to meet you.
Hello, sir.
So have you done this before?
Have I testified in front of councils?
No, no, sorry. I'm sure you've done that. No.
Yes.
I've gotten this type of bracketing passed in this law.
Yes.
And how many times have you done it? How many times have you been successful? How many times did it not work out?
Certainly. Great questions. We've been working in legislative for representing cities for a number of years. I have another business partner named Brandon Agamillion, who can't be here today. He and I actually created this program when it was first, the first city that ever utilized it was the City of Houston. It's a very separate program in a different part of the government code. After that, the City of Fort Worth, where my business partner was working for the mayor at that time in handling legislative affairs for the city. We crafted this. It's ultimately into its modern program. There, not to correct Trey, there's actually 55 cities that are qualified, but only 48 that are bracketed. Several of those brackets catch up. A couple of extra cities. We've qualified 49 of them, and we have 100% track record.
That's all? Just 100%?
Knock on wood. I don't want to.
Yeah, my daughter routinely brings all those words.
Exactly, exactly. Councilmember Kirkland, any other questions?
No, that's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Council?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from councilmember Kirkland, and a second from Mayor Protem Rogers. Is there any, what time, what day does legislative session start?
January the 10th.
January 10th. Let the 140 days begin, right? All right. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. It is 7:38, and we are on item 13. Councilmember Kirkland?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Kirkland, and a second from councilmember Crouch. It is 7:38, and we are adjourned.